This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
But this discussion will be tabled. The soccer field at Rock Road is a town field and it's not a board of education field. Mr. Stirk will share the youth soccer club proposal with Mr. Frida next week. And secondly, from my end, I wanted to say that we, I put together a starting committee for looking at a new mascot for the town, for our school system. And to start off, I have Randy cheering it. The other board of ed rep will be Amanda Gabriel. Patrick will be on his first meeting, Dr. Dallai, Steve Blumenthal and myself will be at that first meeting. It'll just be a meeting to kind of go where we want to go. And then from there on, that group, Dr. Dallai, Steve, Randy and Amanda, will be talking to other people and students to get them to join the group. I'm hoping that by October, we can have a timeline to share with the public. Next is the subcommittees of the board have now begun to resume. And we have a few of the committees we will have here reports on tonight. Doc, do you want to give ACES?
Yes, ACES had their first meeting for this school year, actually this afternoon. And what was shared was the executive director is Adel Green Golds for the 21, 22 school year and then the malls, bike domains, communication, family involved. Of course, I would never, they like, many districts having problems with the bus transportation because it's the lack of bus drivers. And let's see, they're renovating what's now Wintergreen on backside of which we know is the old which are dealt and that market is going to be set. And they're looking to increase collaborative services along with the districts involving, having more districts involved in transportation and anything that would help save the economy.
Thank you, Doc. Curriculum instruction and planning?
I can do that one. And then that'll be almost all of my report if you don't mind.
No, okay.
Most of those things. The CNI committee met right before this meeting. We had Mrs. Brownell, our new six, 12 world language coordinator, join us to discuss a new French textbook for the middle school use. It will be a combination of hard copy text and digital resources. I also shared with the group that the district received, has just received our spring 2021 assessment results. We're beginning to dig into them. And as we have shared in the email group, using this data very cautiously, the state department indicated and acknowledged that the scores are not comparable to previous year's scores and the inconsistency of learning environments has to be taken into account. So we're beginning to get those ready for mail. When the parent reports to students, they will probably be sent out at the end of September. I also provided the CNI group with an update around intervention services. As you know, we now have three full-time EL teachers to provide services to English learners. As of this morning, we have 103 English learners across the district, across all six schools. And we're not certain how many new students we will have to add to that. We have to give them a preliminary screening the first month of school to see if they qualify for services. So our three new EL teachers are really making it so that we're able to have services appropriately across all six schools. All of our reading coaches and interventionists are going to serve in an intervention model at the elementary school to make sure that we are providing targeted intervention for students who may need it. At this point, we are giving benchmark reading assessments to all students in first through fifth grade so that we have accurate reading levels. And at the secondary level, interventionists at the middle and high school are beginning to work with students on helping to reengage and reintegrate them back into the classroom environment after last year. Our EL teachers are in the process of planning a parent night called Connecting Our International Community. And the goal of that will be to provide resources for families about EL supports in school, encourage them to resources in the community and help them to create networks with each other so that they can help navigate different things that they may have a language barrier to. And the only thing that I did mention at CNI is that our elementary band and chorus is ready to return this year, so that's really good news. Parents with fourth and fifth graders should be on the lookout for information about that. We are going to do accelerated recorder instruction in conventional fourth grade and grade four ID because those students didn't have that last year. So we're doing that in the fall. And there's going to be opportunities for students to work with the band teachers in each of their buildings to learn more about the programs during the month of October. And then Google phones and that may also be sent to families so that they can sign up. And we're really excited to be able to offer chorus E and B again, of course, abiding by COVID-19 safety rules. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Melinda. Finance and operations?
They did not.
They did not meet. Howard will get your report at the time. North Haven Education Foundation?
I can report.
Okay.
So the North Haven Ed Foundation held their monthly meeting yesterday morning. They are currently looking for new board members. So anyone who is interested, please reach out to me and I will connect you with a member of the foundation. And they're also running a Basco fundraiser and will be holding a trivia night in the spring.
What's a Basco fundraiser?
The store that's Milford and I think Maridin, I think is one of the big anchor stores.
Okay. We'll learn more about that. Randy, PTA council?
Sure. So last night, I think it was last night, we met virtually. Some information about the PTSA in general and then a few things about which of the schools. The PTSA is sponsoring the North Haven PTA Road Race for 2021. It is on Sunday, October 3rd, and it starts at the high school, ends at the middle school. All the proceeds will fund the art and science programs across all six of our schools. So there's information online if you wanted to get involved in that. And then across all of the schools, they all shared a lot of information that's happening right now. So I kind of picked one or two from each school. The high school will have pictures on September 14th and 15th. The middle school is having a mum fundraiser closer to Thanksgiving and their first PTA meeting is 9:21. And all of the PTA meetings are going to be over Zoom. Green Acres is having their first meeting on September 22nd. And they are having an after-school enrichment program that starts at the end of September with four different sessions. Ridge Road is having their first PTA meeting on September 14th. And a welcome back party which includes a dump tank on September 19th. They are looking for someone to jump in there. Montevi's, their first meeting is September 27th. Patrick Curtis editing is out. Montevi's first meeting is September 27th. They are having a wrapping paper fundraiser and the lime and pies. And Clintonville's first meeting is September 14th. And they're excited to welcome five to six new teachers this year. And the NHEA wanted to thank all of the PTAs because every school's PTA left them either coffee or surprises in mailboxes or food or snacks or special things left in mailboxes or the teacher room for, you know, just to welcome everybody back to the new school year. So there are definitely a lot of things happening at all the schools. And I know that they are all looking forward to a lot of membership from our teachers and our parents. So please support your PTAs. And that's it.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, our next is policy. I know we all saw those, but tonight there were first and second readings of a few different policies. So tonight we will discuss the policies under a second read tonight. But I will read the ones that are going to be for the first read. But then we will discuss as practice the second read. First one, is this where she wanted to talk? No, no one's going to talk.
No, it's all.
Okay. Bullying is the, that we all need to read for our next meeting is a bullying and safety school committee. The new definition of bullying was added. Non-discrimination, a new definition for a veteran was revised, updated, and clarity concerning gender identity. Title IX, discrimination of sexual orientation and gender identity fails under, falls under Title IX. So clarification of the current process and definition has been added. And then the parent teacher communication policy. Those are all our first reads that we need to read on our own and discuss next month. Our second read are of the following policies. We started this, I believe, at our last meeting. Is the physical restraint and seclusion of students and use of exclusionary timeout. Did anyone want to talk about that?
Jen is going to open up with a little discussion. Actually, that policy's first read was a pre-pandemic first read.
Okay.
So Jen's going to provide some highlights to prepare for the next month.
So the seclusion and restraint is only used in emergency situations with students. It's really used to prevent the student from immediate harm to oneself. Can you imagine? Our staff are, can you not hear me? Can you hear me?
Oh, you're good.
Okay. Our staff are trained using Handle With Care, which is done on a yearly basis. And we use train the trainer model. So we're actually doing that training next week. And then staff will have a chance, by the end of October, everyone will be trained that needs to be. Life-threatening physical restraint is never used on a student. Seclusion is not a planned intervention in a student's behavioral plan, IEP or disciplinary measure. If a student is in seclusion, the staff always monitors the student and then staff always have a direct observation of the student. Seclusion or restraint cannot be longer than 15 minutes. If after 15 minutes, the team feels that the seclusion or restraint needs to continue, an administrator, mental health provider or a BCBA determines if the seclusion or restraint needs to go beyond the 15 minutes. All our seclusion rooms are up to regulation in each building. If a student has four or more seclusion or restraints within 20 school days, a PPT needs to be held to discuss the behavior and determine if a plan needs to be revised. And parents always know if their child has been secluded or restrained. Paperwork is completed and then it's sent to me. And then we also send it off to the state. So that's kind of like a summary of how the physical and seclusion is used.
Okay. So when the parent, just one quick question. When the parents are notified, they're notified that same day or even while it might be happening?
So as soon as it's, it's like, say this child's safe and, you know, we go back to normal. We, the parent, the staff will call the parent prior to the end of the day. And it's, and we have to give the paperwork to the parent by 24 hours. But the parent, we always call prior, like before the 24 hours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is our student dress code. Amanda, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, is that a question?
Of course.
So I have a couple of things to talk about, about the dress policy. The first is section B, which is in packet number three for this meeting. It's on page 19 of that packet. And it's got high coverings and I completely agree with the policy here. But I think there's also language under this bullet point that addresses protective hairstyles. And I believe that the language is also appropriate there. But when I spoke with several women who need to wear protected hairstyles, they were confused as to why protective hairstyles are long under head coverings because hair is different from hats. And so I would like to respectfully request that we just break those down into two different bullet points. Not necessarily change anything, which is allowed space for head coverings and hair to be different. So that's one. And then the second is on page 20, items A, L and M addressing tank tops and the length of shorts and skirts. I propose that we remove items A and M altogether and only need the see-through clothing restriction in item L.
So.
So take out the tank tops and the shorts and skirts?
I think that tank tops and sleeveless shirts should be off.
Wait, I'm sorry, tank tops and what?
And sleeveless shirts?
I didn't know the sleeveless shirt wasn't. So, okay, go ahead. Did you have anything on that, Helen?
No, I'm just, because I don't have it up. So here's like take out tank tops.
Yeah, I need to write it.
And then take out the length of the shorts and skirts?
Yeah. I think that, so I see other differences that are going with, it's a fairly silly way of describing it. But it's the no-shoulder ease. So we don't want to see butts, we don't want to see boobs, we don't want to see butts. And like that kind of, as long as you're compliant with that, we're not going to tell you how short shorts can be or how long shorts have to be. My children, for example, have very long legs and have a very difficult time finding shorts that are, would be considered like, in compliance with dress code. So I'm saying, I don't think we need to be monitored for that.
I think the only problem with that is that you're, it's just way too subjective. At every single school, it's, you're trying to judge everything case by case rather than just having what the guideline is.
So why would we, I don't think we need to judge the shortest people's skirts as long as, or progress as long as if you're not seeing anything that a bathing suit wouldn't cover.
No, I understand what you're saying, but how, I mean, how are we determining that then? Like every person that's walking around, somebody's going to report it? Or say, in my opinion, this is too short, in my opinion, this isn't too short? As opposed to just having a stand? We'll make sure that the parts of students are covered.
Right, like I said, we're doing that today. It's just not saying like you have this stand with your hand on your side and you want to bring your finger to it or anything like that. I don't think we need to be so restrictive. I don't.
To be fair, we're not doing, we don't practice that.
But Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong. Do we have a huge issue today with people wearing shorts or shorts or shorts?
Not, not to my knowledge, no.
We have in the past. At the higher levels, not the elementary levels.
But I think if you address that appropriately, in the appropriate way, and I just, I don't think we need it.
My thought on the tank tops. I think tank tops for both men and women, girls and boys are very, are subjective. So you can call a tank top, a, let's just say, a white t-shirt. Let's just say a young man wants to wear like a white t-shirt that's very thin up here. And a young girl, I guess, could too. I had thought that we had a policy that tank tops were allowed, but the straps on the tank tops for both men and women had to be at least, I thought it was three inches wide.
This just says no tank tops and no sleeves.
Yeah, I had thought we previously had a policy. It could be going back a long time, but I thought it was that we said three inches wide.
I just, I don't, this is my personal opinion, right? And I, several parents have reached out to me about the dress policy. They said they feel like it's a little overly restrictive. Their daughter goes shopping at different places and are having trouble finding things. But I would feel uncomfortable with people going up to my kid and like.
I don't think anybody would, would do that.
I don't think.
But you would know the difference in a spaghetti strap? No, here, here's the key. We're, we're a place of learning. Everyone should be dressing to learn, whether it's a teacher, a para administrator or a student. So I'm sure that parents would not, and students would know that it's a place of learning. I would not be comfortable to see anybody wearing spaghetti strap type t-shirts in school, whether it's a male or a female, to have spaghetti straps. And that was why, I think in the past, we had that three, three inch, and nobody measured. You can, you can just look, you know, when someone's wearing a spaghetti strap or a strapless shirt. I mean, and that's where you have to go to. I mean, we don't have anything here that can a girl or a boy wear a strapless shirt?
That says you have to have, your shirt has to have. That's, that's our dress code policy.
Yeah, okay. But then we can also wear off-the-shoulder then. Because as long as my shirt has sleeves, then I can wear an off-the-shoulder shirt.
I feel like that's, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I don't either. I'm just, we're just having a conversation. I don't have a problem with off-the-shoulder. What I do have a problem with is the definition of a tank top for both male and female.
So I think a lot of workplaces right now are also moving away from overly defining everything within a dress code. And, you know, a company that I used to work for went from a five-page dress code to a five-word dress code. If it says dress appropriately for your day. And I think it does lead up to being fairly nebulous. It's like what is appropriate for your day. But that's something that our students will face, I think, when they enter the workforce, whatever type of job they choose to have. They're going to have to dress appropriately for their day. And I get a little uncomfortable with the overly prescriptive nature of things and thinking about if we were to strictly enforce this dress code, it may disproportionately be enforced upon our ladies as opposed to on men, specifically in those three areas.
Unless I'm reading this incorrectly, letter L says see-through clothing, tank tops or sleeveless shirt. It doesn't say tank tops, it says see-through tank tops.
So I said that.
No, there's a comma.
I'd like to keep the see-through clothing portion of that, like no see-through clothing. If you're going to wear a super thin white shirt, that's like not okay. We don't want people to be able to see through it. But you can wear tank tops and you can wear sleeveless shirts.
So, okay, I was reading it as those see-through apply to all three and not just, one or the other.
Okay.
Because I don't think we need to have see-through clothing. I don't want to see that. But tank tops and sleeveless shirts, I'm okay with.
You know, I actually really do think there's a difference in a tank top, whether it's a young man's tank top that he may be wearing to the gym or working out, and a young woman's tank top that shows a spaghetti strap. I think neither one of them are appropriate for learning, for dressing. That's my personal opinion for, for school dress. That's just my opinion, you know, it doesn't, it's just me having that discussion with you. I don't have children in the school district. They're well at that, but I just do remember it being three inches, approximately three inches for tank tops for both men and women, for boys and girls.
Yeah, can I just ask a question? Do you think that's dependent on the age of the student, elementary to middle high? Or do you see it being a point?
Yeah, you know, I think clothing is so distracting in public school situations. Who has what type of clothing, whose family can afford a certain type of? I know we do not allow people to, you know, kids to wear certain, you know, things that, you know, album covers or things that promote things. But there are, and I don't even know what the popular clothing is right now for students. So just, I'll just go back to what I know. Let's just say with Abercrombie and Fitch, not everybody's family could, could wear that. So I lost my train of thought while I was trying to think of what's popular today. So we, you know, do you have that in elementary school? Yes, we should probably.
I was thinking more along the tank top line.
Yeah, the tank top, that's what I was saying. I'm going, I don't know.
Earlier about not having air conditioning in the elementary schools and if that impacts.
Go ahead.
So I get what you're saying, Amanda, but I also think, I mean, broader point that we're not having an issue right now with the way it's written. So I just don't know why we need to change it. And I think my daughter also has long legs, but if she's wearing shorts that are distracting, I mean, then I would rather her have. But I think, like if it's, I think it's more written, if the clothing is distracting, if the tank top is too low or the shorts you're saying, you know, are showing something. But if it's not causing an issue right now or we're not seeing an issue, I don't see why we need to change it either.
And I just, I think that's an excellent point and like be in a discussion with somebody else. We have not talked that way. And then when I thought about it, I was like, well, if we leave it in there, it's objective. Who draws the line on like what tank tops are not okay, right? Who is enforcing it and are we enforcing it the same way consistently every time? Because if they're not, then we open ourselves up to some people's liability stuff here. And to me, if, if I can't, I don't think we should be so rigid. You know, like I just feel like if you want to wear a tank top to school and your parents are cool, if you wear a tank top to school, you got it. But I'm hearing from like things, don't leave the house without like us making sure that it looks like they're going to go there. But I think that like the consistency of the application is what's important. And maybe we say that, you know, shirts and trousers, tank tops and sleeveless shirts, miniskirts, et cetera are out. There was recently a article, I think it was Fortune magazine, about a young girl who started a protest every Friday because she was called out for dress clothing for her shorts being too short. And she's still in school now because a male student or something similar with different teachers and did not present the same dress clothing. And I know that this is not what's happening in our district. I think that we're dealing with things in very appropriate ways. But I'm just, I'm just waiting for it. And as additional expectations are coming out about how dress clothing impacts people and as, as folks are kind of considering this as a corporate world, we consider like dress clothing, et cetera, I think this is an opportunity for us to just say like, we don't need to necessarily worry about that piece of it as long as you're not feeling any sort of need. Like no, it's a need.
I think if we make it too broad, that actually opens up more liability. Because there is no check and balance. There is no, like if it's, you know, two students and teacher A thinks student A is dressed appropriately versus student B, well, go look. Like this isn't, this is okay because that's what it says here. First, making it too broad, I don't feel like I want to spend a lot of time on this stuff. You know, when we make it too broad, then there is no check and balance. That's all I'm asking. I think it opens up more, but again, it's my own personal opinion.
I, I hear you and I think that's a valid point. But I guess my point is like, why would teachers think that a tank top is, is, if we say that tank tops are wrong, then it's none of your business if people are wearing a tank top. I don't want them to wear a tank top. Because that shouldn't be it. And if it's distracting to you, then I think we need to have a conversation about why a tank top on a young student is a distraction.
Okay, I think it could also look at another discussion about professional attire versus non-professional attire too, you know? I think they, they could be viewed in so many different lenses. And I think.
But I think, and not all workers are going to wear business casual attire or business woman attire in that day. There are folks who are going to go to trades. There are folks who are going to.
Right, professional attire with that profession.
You should be dressing appropriately for your day.
Right, like I can wear sweatpants in life. In some parts of life, you know, that is okay because in that sense, it's okay. So I think school, I don't know. I just think, I don't think they're that cumbersome, but that's just my point. So let everybody else talk.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with either of those provisions, the way they're written right now. I don't think they're that cumbersome. And I was, I was listening while you were talking, trying to listen carefully to what you were saying. And what, I guess what I'm not understanding is if, and maybe I'm not, if I'm misunderstanding what you say, please correct me. But if we're trying to reduce the ambiguity of the provision, right? And then we're taking out things that I don't think are, I mean, we're not, we're not saying, get out a ruler and check for three inches or anything like that. So it's not like, you know, super cumbersome as it's written now. But if we're trying to reduce the ambiguity and the interpretation of it, why are we getting out the basic, or taking out the basic guidelines and opening it up to more interpretation? That's, that's where I'm getting lost.
So I think I'm just, like my main point is that like I, I don't have a problem with short shorts. I don't have a problem with tank tops. I don't think they, they interrupt learning. And I think that we just probably shouldn't be regulating that. And if somebody comes in naked, that's obviously a problem. That's obviously against the dress code. I'm fine with addressing that. If somebody comes in with a offensive slur on their shirt, I'm fine addressing that. I just, I don't, I think that the, the need to call things like tank tops and sleeveless shirts as part of something that shouldn't be on the dress code seems a little outdated to me. And, and to me, I think that, you know, mostly like the miniskirts and the tank tops and sleeveless shirts, I know that some, some boys do wear things like this. But this is largely more by our female students. And I, I don't love that there's like a lot more. And I, I don't love that there's like a lot more language in here that is not explicitly addressing our female students, but will have a disproportionate impact on our female students, should these items be enforced. So, that's basically my point. Again, this is my opinion, so.
No, I, I understand your point, and I'm never the one to say, let's have more rules and regulations and stuff. I wanna get rid of as much of that stuff as possible, but that's just my basic outlook on, on politics, which is beside the point. But here, I don't think it's overly policing anything. I just think it's, it's basic, basic what you should wear or what you shouldn't wear. I don't know if it has a disproportionate effect on young women as opposed to young men. I would argue that I don't think that's the intent of the, of the dress code.
I agree, that's, I don't think that's the intention.
But it is a school, it's a place to learn. It's, I don't think people should be going in things that they would go to hang out with their friends at the movie or that sort of thing. You know, I think there should be some basic level of, of what's appropriate and what's not. And to me, the way this is written, it's not so cumbersome that, that people can't get a decent idea for what they should or shouldn't wear to, to school. And that's just my opinion.
Amanda, I'm comfortable about the sleeveless shirts. I didn't realize you couldn't wear that sleeveless shirts were on our dress code. I'm comfortable with students wearing sleeveless shirts. I'm just not comfortable with spaghetti straps or very thin straps on either a male or a female that they're, I do under, I think the sleeveless, and especially on the elementary side, because of the air conditioning and the heating. And, you know, you may even have a teacher who wears sleeveless shirts to school, you know, she takes her jacket off. Or he takes his, well, not he, a man would wear short shorts mostly, but a teacher may, in the elementary school, have a jacket on in the morning and then take it off and have a sleeveless shirt on underneath. So I'm comfortable with, with that. It's just, I really, again, my opinion, and then we'll go down here, is that tank tops should have some sort of width to them, to a width to them. I'm not against having tank tops being worn. I just think that we need to be just more cognizant of what tank tops are worn, whether they're muscle shirts or spaghetti-strapped ones. Does anyone else have any comments?
I agree that, I think there's a lot in here that's not enforced, and if we're not going to enforce a policy, we should change the policy to one that we're enforcing. And I think the way that this is written, there's some things that aren't enforced, and more than they need to be, right? So I think that, that, with the point that policy can, we need to be consistent throughout. And so, I think taking a look at it and deciding what is and isn't okay is, is good. I think sleeveless shirts absolutely need for people to be, especially with the air conditioning, a lot of other things. People have been wearing leggings and pants for years, and I, you know, I, so I think that's, those are things that are fine, and, but we also, there also is policies under that. And so, I think there needs to be some sort of one that's on this.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how to word it appropriately, because I had three girls go through the high school. And I guarantee you, no matter who the girl is, if they're wearing short shorts, it's gonna be a distraction to a 15, to an 18-year-old boy. That's just the way it is. And it is gonna be, unfortunately, more burdensome for the woman with their, their clothing, because they're the one going through the physical changes. The boys go through the physical changes, but their, you know, their voice is getting deeper, maybe they're getting a little bit of a beard, but they're not developing breasts and other body features that are distinctive to a woman that, at that age group for a boy, is distracting. You could be wearing a parka, it's gonna be distracting for a boy. So it's just, you know, the fact that shorts, the length of short shorts, it's gonna need to be addressed at some point. You have to have the option to address it. If you don't have the option to address it, you may not have a problem now. That does not mean you're not gonna have a problem tomorrow, the end of the year, two years from now, whenever that is. And I just think that, you know, the policy is the way it stands, seems to be enough. And I, granted, that if we're not following the policy, that's one thing, but that's not reason to change the policy for change's sake. If you're gonna have a policy, then follow it. And I think that's how you would rectify this, other than changing the policy to follow, follow the one you have.
Can I just add one last question? So, Ron, I hear what you're saying, and I've heard that argument before, but I just, I think where we disagree is who has the responsibility in that scenario for controlling themselves? So, to me, I think that the onus is placed on young women to not wear short outfits for a long time in order to help the young gentlemen control themselves. And I would argue that we are a school system that is teaching folks to be respectful members of society with a certain level of self-respect. And I would shift the burden of responsibility there to the young gentlemen who are distracted by young ladies, and to say that they need to figure out how to control themselves.
I, I get that, and there's also the problem of enticement by young women to young men. I mean, you know, women are attracted to men, men are attracted to women. So there is an onus on both sides to control the outcome of, you know, how they're acting with, with clothing. So it's not just a men, and the onus is on both, but again, the physical attributes of a woman and the way they change during those years is more obvious than anything. And it just, it needs to be the way, again, the way the policy is now, if you just stay with the policy and enforce it, you know, if the issue is without enforcing, enforce that policy without having to change it.
So I, I think, my thought is, and I think Joe alluded to it, is that if there's no specific information or guidelines, then it's difficult to enforce a policy, because then you need discretion, and then discretion creates issues, because it's like, okay, you implemented it this way for this person or at this school, but at this school, it was implemented differently. So the more guidance, specific, the more guidance and specific information that you provide in terms of the clothing length and everything, if you wanna say, for example, if it's short, it can be above the knee. If you wanna provide that kind of guidance, that's as much guidance as we can give the school administrators, you know, to enforce that. You know, this school environment is a learning environment. You know, unfortunately, you know, some kids, you know, wear things that are not appropriate and things like that. That's why we have the policy, so that it's more, we're creating, we're supporting an environment that's meant for, for learning. So, my thought is, in terms of specific, I'm struggling with this word today. But, thank you. In terms of what Randy said, I think that, you know, the policy as it stands, you know, you know, should be, should be specific, you know, in, in terms of clothing, because once you, I know, you know, we may not have an issue today, but when you create policy, you're creating policy for the future also. You're not just creating policy for today or what happened. It may be something that happened in the past, but it's something that has to be specific, you know, in terms of, of the items of all kinds of clothing and things like that. If you're looking at the length and, and so that the administrators, administrators have some guidance that they can follow when they're enforcing it.
Nina, may I make a proposal?
Mm-hmm.
That we reinstitute the policy subcommittee and have some discussions there.
Okay.
Bring it back to the board.
I think that's a good idea. That's what we'll do. We'll put together a subcommittee, continue to talk about, about it. Pardon?
Put together a subcommittee.
Reinstitute the policy subcommittee and have discussions, and then bring it back to the whole board.
Okay.
The last policy for a second read today is the minority educator recruitment policy that's still in draft form, so I just wanna open that up to a board discussion as well.
Can I just ask a question about the policies in general? Sorry, just like, we just did not know, so I apologize, but are these like blanket policies that most schools have? That most schools have, or are these ones that, like, the board of education grew up years ago, or like?
Kind of all of the above. Many of them we were discussing.
It says, like, the future, and I'm excited to hear what they come from then.
So they are model policies that they provide to, to the board, and the board obviously has the leeway to adjust it, but these are the model ones that go out to all their subscriber districts.
Oh, that's all, thank you.
Sure.
So, I think when we talked about the review of the minority education recruitment policy last month, Jen had mentioned one or two things, and then about places to go. And again, for me, again, I say that whomever we hire just has to be the best possible candidate. But we should for sure go out and recruit people who may not typically apply to North Haven school systems.
You wanna ensure that we have a diverse pool?
Right.
A very competent hiring committee.
Yep. Does anyone have any other questions on that? Did you have anything else?
That's it for policy.
Okay, our next item will be our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to provide a, an update around remote learning expectations. So, we are finalizing a document to lay out remote learning expectations for this current school year. And it's a little bit different than last year, because these remote learning expectations only will apply to the following circumstances. They're only for students who must be in COVID-19 quarantine or isolation. They're, in addition, they only are to address localized outbreak, either in school or a school district. And in very rare and individualized circumstances, they're for students with elevated risks from COVID-19 exposure due to living with family members with a documented vulnerability to COVID-19. So, in summary, what all that means is, so live streaming and remote instruction will be provided to students who are either quarantining or isolating due to COVID. And teachers will provide a link to students, and they are able to view the instruction within the classroom. So this is a little bit different than last year, because students will only be observing the classroom instruction. So K-5 students will have specific times from their teachers, according to their classroom schedule to view instruction. Other times throughout the day, utilized to complete independent instruction or to jump on things like iReady or practice, practice fax activities, things like that, asynchronous. And grade six through 12, because they're a little older and they can, they don't necessarily have those time restraints around screens, thank you, they will, they will observe instruction in their classes throughout their regularly scheduled day, so there'll be no adjustments there. And in theory, quarantine should be less, this year especially at the seventh through 12 level. More students are vaccinated than before, and we also realized at the K-5 level, it didn't take us long to realize this, that having teachers balance in-person instruction with virtual instruction is very difficult to do. So, in addition, we went down from a 10-day quarantine to a possible seven-day quarantine with a test at the fifth, sixth, or seventh day. So that lessens the amount of time students will be out of the classroom, so it's almost more of a stopgap. So with seven days, you might get a weekend in there. So it'll be less time where students are out of the classroom quarantine. And one thing that I wanted to note is that the state requires students to be present for half the day when accessing live instruction, and that doesn't mean that they're on live stream all day, but it can also apply to completing instructions and assignments independently, completing activities on like an iReady or one, another electronic system, or any combination. So, anyway, just to outline that. Are there any questions around that? Sure.
Around the subject quarantine and the test, would that be PCR test?
It can be PCR or, or any test.
Oh, here, okay.
Yep. It just can, we're not taking necessarily home tests at this point.
Melina?
How would they, how would they live through the, the computer camera?
Correct.
Because this one will immediately four P S R.
Right, but there's not like a-
So there's a vacuum camera. Every teacher has a vacuum camera they purchased last year, so they can-
Oh, so the teacher doesn't have one here, or?
No, no, no. And there are other situations included in the, the expectations document, including instruction, an instructional schedule if a class, school, or district, or district needs to transition to a fully remote platform. And the schedule will mirror the same as last year. So it'll be a full day for both, well, K through 12, the K through 5, 8:30 or 12:30 would be virtual instruction with the PM schedule being individualized instruction. And then at the high school level, it would be a full day of instruction. I believe, make sure that that's correct. And also, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the vulnerable student or vulnerable family member clause. Now, this is a very rare occurrence, of a student who's living with a vulnerable family member who cannot attend school and must be remote. These cases are really rare, and they have really specific guidelines around it. We don't have any of those students at this time, but they have to meet the specific criteria. Chipman and Goodwin has helped us develop that. So Joe, last week, Joe, Melinda, and I, along with Howard, discussed these expectations with our representatives from the MEGA. And we're finalizing them early next week, communicate them out to parents, staff, as soon as they're finalized. So, we have the document almost set to go.
Thank you. Thank you for the time you all put into that. With the CEA, for those who don't know, is a teachers' union, for those who are listening to us.
Just have a couple more things that-
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So I just wanted to comment a little bit about busing. Howard, myself, and the building principals have been working closely with M&amp;J to tackle some of the issues associated with the driver shortage. Dot mentioned it before, ACIS as well. The company is currently six drivers short. However, we were just notified today that a driver resigned early this morning. So, M&amp;J is, is working diligently to, to hire, to train drivers. They're actually attending job fairs to attract new drivers as well. So I'm hopeful that they'll be able to increase the number of drivers within the next month. I believe they have about, they have three drivers in training now. So, but some good news is today, bus cleared at 4:15. That is very close to a normal time for us, and really for the fifth day of school, that's really good.
And a rainy day too.
Yeah, and rainy day. A little bit on mask guidance, I know that came up at the last meeting. At this time, the governor's executive order is still set to expire on September 30th. There's been no official change in that guidance, but during the Department of Health and State Department of Ed, which we call, they've intimated that guidance will be forthcoming prior to the 30th, so we're still waiting on that. And just in closing, I wanted to mention that the town of North Haven, along with Fred, our own Fred Fiendella, have organized an event to recognize and, and remember the 20th anniversary of 9/11. So it'll take place this Saturday on the Green at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Doc.
I haven't yet, a lot. I just, some bus companies are, our friend sign, sign, oh, sign, yeah, sign up those, signing bonuses. If, you know, people sign up, they always look up, or they're actually raising the per hour back. Is any of that available?
When I spoke to John, he did not mention either one of those. Did you hear any of that?
No, I haven't heard, he's been off. Last, last year, we still had the issue. He had talked about it then, but I haven't heard that he's doing it this year. And so I haven't, I haven't heard that yet.
Okay, second. What about Project Choice kids?
So, Project Choice at two of our schools, at Monoise and Clintonville, they have a, a driver shortage out of North Haven as well, using the Daco bus company. And we are on a, kind of a wait-and-see a day by day through the Open Choice, where they're able to transport our Open Choice students to Monoise, to Clintonville. However, in the afternoon, they're unsure whether they will have drivers each day to take these students home. Most of the Aers, M&amp;Bally at Open Choice are communicating with all those families to let them know in advance. And they recognize, you know, it's really difficult to plan day-to-day when you're going to have transportation home, but it's really the best they can do. They've, they've reached out to other bus companies. They're, they're really trying here to fix this problem.
So what are we doing in the meantime for those kids?
So, at this point, I don't- So at this point, I know parents are coming to pick them up. And I believe the other day, this has only been two days now, the other day they end up with a driver. And today, I'm not sure if they had a driver or not, I did not hear whether they were taken home or did not. They're not communicating with, they're not communicating directly with us, they're communicating with the schools to make sure that the kids can come safely.
So does, is every family able to come and get their child? Everyone has transportation?
Everyone will have, yeah.
Adult, I mean, the adult families, they're capable of coming to North Haven? Or do we have families that don't have a way to get here to pick up their kids?
As far as I know, they do. Nothing's been communicated to the buildings that students have not been able to get picked up, yeah.
Okay. Do we notify them by a certain time every day until they're home?
I'm sorry, Jen.
Do you know by a certain time every day whether we have the buses to pick them up from North Haven?
From Daco.
I'm just wondering if folks are at work and having to leave.
Right, and that's the biggest dilemma. Like it's so different, Melissa said that in her communication to us is that they're only, they're notifying right in the morning as soon as they can, when they know they have transportation. And it's not overly helpful to families because they have to plan in advance, but it's the best they can do.
Hopefully, Daco's bus situation will resolve just like ours. I mean, it's unfortunate, and it's happening across the country, the shortage of buses, drivers.
How many students are involved in the Open Choice?
At two schools, I'd say it's around 20.
About 20 kids? Okay, thank you. Jen, Director of Student Services report.
Okay, so special ed, first is, remember, parents can contact special education teachers because that's their main contact. If parents with like electronic copies of the IEPs, just in case they have, you know, they don't have a copy, they can email the case manager, they can electronically send it to them, or they can put it in the mail. Something new this year for PPTs is parents might be asked to complete a questionnaire prior to the PPT because then that'll give the team information of where the parents are thinking, what their vision is for their child, if they have any concerns. And it's a really easy Google form for parents, there's like three or four questions. PPTs will be held remotely or in person, it's kind of the comfort level at this time of the school team and the parents. I do know some parents for, for remote because it's easier for them, you know, to hop onto a meeting if they're at work, they might just take their lunch break or something. So it's really up to the teams. I'm going to have an evening event in, in October, it's going to be understanding the IEP. I wanted to do it right before the pandemic hit, so now we're going to get to it, it's a little late, but we'll get to it. More information will come. Social emotional learning, this whole month for the entire district is on self-awareness. Social emotional learning at the elementary schools, the students are establishing their daily check-in, understanding their strengths, their body and behavioral awareness, understanding emotions. At the middle school, some things the students are going to be answering is, are you an introvert, extrovert, pessimist? What are some of your favorite things? Who am I? And then at the high school, just kind of at a different level, what is self-awareness? How do I become more self-aware? And then they're going to create biohomes. And then counseling, the ASVAB will be provided to 10th, 11th, and 12th graders if they would like to take it after school on October 8th, which is a PD, PD day for staff, but more information from the counseling department at the high school will come out about that.
Jen, I couldn't hear you. What's going to be available?
It's ASVAB, so it's really, it's the career exploration program that allows students to explore multiple paths to success, such as licensure programs, military college certificates, and apprenticeships.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And the PSATs are scheduled for October 13th for 9th, 10th, and 11th graders. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Jen, can I ask you one quick question? The questionnaire that's going out regarding the, or before the PPTs, is that universal for every PPT? Is it like done by the school, case by case, or?
Yep, so I, so I, we, I created it. And then each school, I shared it with them so they, the case manager can share it with the parents.
Okay.
But it's all the same questions across the board.
And it'll go out to everyone before their PPT?
If the, the team, I encourage them to use it, but like I'm saying, it's, you know, if any family wants, like, they can reach out to the case manager.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Howard, our Director of Finance and Operations report.
As my report showed, the operating budget spending continues to remain on track, no major issues to report. I do want to note that, as you will see, there's always two reports in the package, one that has UNIS, which has the encumbrances, just so you can see what we, if you look at that, that's showing you what we would have to, if everything stopped right now, what we have to spend regardless. And then my other report, which is in the Excel format, two months does not a trend make, so I haven't put notes on the right-hand side that I normally put on there, I'll probably start that about a six-month timeframe, give or take. But at the bottom of that report, you'll see I've added comparison to last year, just to show you that is a trend that we can watch and see if we're spending more this year month by month in overall. So I just wanted to note that that's a change on that report that wasn't there last year that is there now for your review, if you want to take a look at that. And recently, it was brought to my attention that there's a requirement for the Board of Ed bylaws that all budget transfers greater than $10,000 are required to be approved by the board on a monthly basis. I will now be reporting, I wasn't aware of that, and I just found out, so going forward, if there are any, there's none this month, but I know there will be next month because I've already done that, so that they have to happen because it has to do with where people are lined up and their salaries, we have to do salary budgets around. So, and what I'm also doing to implement a change to that, so that we don't have to do this going forward, is there's, in UNIS, there's this procedure called position control, which actually allows you to know exactly where the positions are and assign an account to them, because that wasn't being utilized in the past. And what happens is, we have a disconnect between payroll and personnel. And personnel is entering accounts into the system and payroll's booking it somewhere else that it doesn't belong in. What position control does is unites those two and makes sure that they are both united in where that account is going to go, so that going forward, we won't have to do these budget transfers anymore. It will have to happen this year because we didn't have that until this summer when I implemented it, so that the past budget was already approved and already assigned. So that's something that you'll see, you'll, next month, you'll start seeing the transfers that I have to talk to you about when I report. Our annual EFS compliance was completed on September 1st, that's what we are required to report all of our prior expenses to the state. That's on time, that's when we had to have it in, it's been done, it's been uploaded and sent to the state and validated by Patrick, Mr. Stur. We will now wait for any changes that come out of that. What happens is the auditors now go in and they look at it, make sure that it's aligned with the way the state wants it aligned. We have to make adjustments, we make adjustments, and then I'll come sometime in December, I'll report on that, that's what we're doing, the adjustments that we have to make. And we're still, the last thing, just has to do with the grants, we're still waiting on approval of the SRR3R grant, which is a $2 million, $2.41 million grant by the state in order to be entwined down in the funds. We will see, we, they, we had talked about one of the bigger projects that we are funding through the capital project currently is the elementary school fire alarm replacement. We are actually purchasing the, all the equipment now, it won't be installed until next June. The project's been delayed because it would be too interrupted to the school, to the school year. And so the day school gets out next June is when that project will start to be put in place. That right now, we have, they require $242,000 of the equipment, they're now storing it for us and they are putting, and so that's, we actually have to pay for that out of our capital funds, which will then be reversed by the SRR funds as soon as I can draw it down. That's all I have, unless there's questions.
You said that there are no transfers this month, correct?
There are no transfers this month.
Okay.
That are greater than $10,000. You'll see, if you look at the UNIS report, you'll see some transfers, but they're all mine, less than $10,000.
Oh, they're all below that, okay. Now, you know, and Howard, I know I say it just about every, every monster report, it's so easy to, to read, and for those of us not in the accounting world, easy to understand. So I appreciate that. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, we accept that. And next, we come to our public comments section of the meeting. Prior to making your comment tonight, please state your name and address, and we also ask that you record the information on the note table right here after, after making your comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? Tim?
Do I talk over here or is that?
I don't know if it's on.
It is on.
Okay, yep.
Just point me over here.
So Tim Gabriel, Renee Lane, I just want to first, like, thank you all for keeping our school safe and keeping the, getting the school year off to a good start. My kids were both in remote classes last year, so this is a big transition for them to get back into the classroom. So far, they've been thriving, haven't had any problems with the adjustment or anything like that. And we're really excited to have them back in school, they seem to really be enjoying it. So that's good. Regardless of the policy that expires on September 30th, I think that, you know, I can't see a scenario without child vaccinations, especially for under 12, where they're not going to continue the mask mandate, but I think that that should be a good policy going forward. I think the reason for that is because, I think we should say unequivocally, because the masks work. You know, I, I think it's important to state that, that that is kind of scientific consensus and that is something that is out there. And also that, you know, I sort of, you know, when I got all the, you know, even though we were in remote classrooms, we would get the letters home from Patrick about all the students who had to quarantine or students who tested positive last year, and I shudder to think what would have happened if we didn't have our masking along with our other guidances in place during that time. So I think that that has actually saved some lives in the process. The other thing that I wanted to address was the dress code conversation, I just wanted to put my piece out there. I agreed with my wife, which you would not be surprised to learn, but sometimes we don't disagree, sometimes we do disagree, but on this, I do agree with her. You know, schools are not a workplace, they're, they're a little bit different. And especially when you're dealing with children where they're in this kind of period where they're sort of like developing and they're finding themselves and they're kind of changing. They're in this building for eight hours a day and they're kind of finding out who they are, and they're going to make mistakes along the way. So I'm not saying that like everybody's going to come to school dressed in a way that we would all approve of, especially like as parents ourselves. But I also think that, you know, as somebody who's a father of a daughter in school, who I have to sort of have these conversations about what she's going to face as a woman in the world, you know, whether she likes it or not, she's just going to be treated differently. There are things that she's going to have to go through that her brother is not going to, that I wouldn't, never had to go through myself. And I'm also a father of a son who I have to treat, I have to tell to treat women respectfully and make sure that I, that he learns those lessons through me, and hopefully they're being reinforced through the schools and other places as well, too. And also somebody who, it was probably a while ago, but doesn't seem that long ago for me, was once a teenage boy, and believe it or not, it was not that hard to not be distracted in class. It really wasn't. It just, you know, maybe it's harder for some other people, but I think that sometimes we just have that be an excuse to let people behave in the ways that are very convenient for them to behave. I think one of the, the issues that I didn't hear discussed is the issue of body shaming, which I think is a big issue, especially for young women, not exclusively, but I think it's something that disproportionately affects them. And I think that that is one thing that we should bear in mind when we're coming up with any kind of dress code, too, is that they're, through their peers and through their, you know, social networks and through culture, advertising, all these other things, women are going to receive messages about how their body should look and why it's not good enough and why they should dress a certain way for a certain person, and why they should always be thinking about what other men should, are thinking of them at any given time. And I think one way to avert that is to have these kind of conversations that are uncomfortable and unfortunately, like, I think as parents, we sort of have to have these conversations. But another way is through policy and making sure that the policy doesn't sort of reflect that attitude of making sure that women are made to feel uncomfortable with the way that they look, even if they are making mistakes along the way that we wouldn't necessarily agree with. And I think that, you know, it's not to say that, you know, you as a parent are going to, you know, you can't have any kind of say about what your kids personally will go to school with, you know, when they walk out the door. But, you know, I think just at the line of sort of policing it for other people, yes, you do have to have some kind of distinction just to make sure that people aren't showing up naked to classrooms, which I doubt has ever happened, but you want to make sure that there is a rule that says that that's not allowed. But beyond that, I think that we want to sort of limit, at least I, I personally think that, like, you want to limit what, how, how far that goes. So that's pretty much it, I just wanted to put my piece out there. I want, you know, trust, trust our parents and also like trust our students, too. I know it's, it's a hard thing to do, that's probably like the most difficult thing to do, but, you know, we have to, we have to let them kind of learn along the way and make sure that we're kind of supporting them in the ways that they need to be supported and not just being kind of overly prescriptive on what they need to do, at least that's what I think so. Thank you.
You don't need to write down, Tim, we know where to find you. Right, Joyce? Okay. Was there anyone else? Thank you, Tim. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay. Then with that, may I have a motion to adjourn the September 9, 2021 regular Board of Ed meeting? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good night, everyone, thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.